Good evening, everyone. I'm so glad to see so many of you. And I encourage those of you who have your video off to turn your video on so that you can see and see your community and be seen as well. Sweats are completely okay. I thank you for the time to be with us tonight. Over these weeks, we've received such wonderful feedback and support from our families. And I thank you, as always, for the meaningful partnership. I do miss you and all of your beautiful children. I want to take you on a journey to remind you of a lighter time filled with much hope of when we began the year together and the reasons you chose and continue to choose to be at Wise School. We have the highest caliber of teachers dedicated to their work and to the values of Wise School and Stephen Wise Temple. We offer an emergent curriculum that develops and encourages children as critical thinkers, capable, and competent. We hold our Jewish values at the center of everything we do and teach, and we ignite that love for Jewish life and learning within our students. We do all of this on an extraordinary campus that is like none other. And for you as a parent, we are building in partnership a beautiful community of families that will hopefully be a part of your family's journey for a good, long time. As we plan to reopen in the fall, the knowledge that all of these things are still in place and that we add to it an ever more robust health and safety protocol is what will continue to set us apart. Tonight, we will take you through what school will look like for your child next year from the perspectives of health and safety, social and emotional wellbeing, and intellectual growth. And we will talk through the financial impact of COVID-19 and how we are supporting one another as we move through this. We will answer many of your previously submitted questions during our presentation, and we will follow with the remainder at the end of our presentation. And please note that this will be an ongoing conversation. There are so many resources and experts in our Stephen Wise Temple community who have been instrumental in our problem solving. They oversee the governing of our school and our finances. They are our Temple Board of Directors, and we are so grateful for their leadership during this time. I would like to introduce the president of our board and one of the greatest advocates of our school, Janine Kalatney.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much, Jen, for giving me the opportunity to introduce and to virtually meet all of you. Some of you I know, and those who I don't, I'm really happy to be here tonight to be able to have this opportunity. As president of the temple, I'm here representing a passionate and dedicated Board of Directors who all support and believe very strongly in the mission of our schools. Many years ago, my husband and I were in your shoes, selecting an early childhood program for our two kids. We selected Stephen Wise for the outstanding Jewish education and early childhood program that we knew our kids would receive. What we didn't realize back then was the long-term benefit and impact that Stephen Wise would have on all of our lives, on our families' lives. It was during these crucial informative years that we made lifelong friendships and became part of a loving and warm community. To this day, our kids' closest friends are the friends they made up at Stephen Wise in the early childhood program. When I sit in a board meeting and I ask our leaders to raise their hands and tell us how they first became involved in our community, an overwhelming number of hands are raised because they all met during the early childhood program. I'm excited to tell you all and to share with you that my daughter, who is 31, is now pregnant. She began her life in the Early Childhood Center, and my husband and I will become grandparents for the first time in September. It's with huge joy that I look forward to the day that Michelle and her husband Zach enroll in our early childhood program and that we continue the legacy mid door, la door. Let's not allow this short-term crisis to impede the long-term benefits and impact that your relationships will have and the friendships you will make as you come into our early childhood program. It is long-lasting, and I can only tell you that we have shared so many joyous occasions and life's milestones with the friends that we made at the early childhood program. I'm now very honored to hand you back to Jen, the director of our early childhood program, who you all know. And I just know with her outstanding leadership, you're all in the best and most competent hands. So with that, Jen.
Thank you, Janine. So what is it going to look like as we move forward? Slide one. As we plan for reopening school, we will make decisions in conjunction with the Department of Social Services, which oversees all early childhood centers in the state, the county Board of Health, and the CDC. We will also do so with input from members of our own community. We have created an advisory task force comprised of administration, the Temple Board, and community experts that have been leading the charge and will continue to do so. Slide two. We will also have our working groups that in the coming months will be instrumental in making our reopening as smooth as possible for our children, parents, and staff, taking into consideration the areas of logistics, health and safety, medical, and financial. Slide three. As we plan to come back to campus, we will focus tonight on four areas. One, health and safety. Two, social and emotional support. Three, intellectual growth. And four, financial plans. All early childhood centers must follow the guidelines of the Department of Social Services. You may have heard us call it licensing. These are guidelines we must adhere to at any time, not just now, in order to remain open and functioning. It's important to note that while many of the guidelines are fixed, the ones that have been created in regard to health and safety during COVID-19 are ever-evolving. The guidelines I am sharing with you tonight are what currently exist. They are set to expire on June 30th, at which point the department will either continue those guidelines or loosen or tighten as they see fit. So basically, every preschool right now is making plans based on these guidelines remaining in place and then adjusting things as they shift. Slide four. Health and safety. According to licensing, our current class size must be 10 children to a class with two teachers in the classroom. I don't know of a better ratio in town. The idea is that this class is a pod, and the children and teachers do not mix with those in other pods, whether on the yards or in other spaces. As of now, our plan is to run a five-day-a-week schedule, 9 to 12, or 9 to 2. Again, no mixing from class to class. As a result, we will not be able to offer enrichments or the regular extended-day programming for the fall. For people who do need full day because of work schedules, we are looking to offer grade level or potentially, if we don't have enough in a grade level, several mixed-age classes that would run until 5:00 PM. As of now, parents are not allowed into the school. So we are looking at a car line drop-off and pickup system. We're considering staggered drop-offs to allow the children the easiest transition into the day. When you drop your child off, they will be greeted by one of their teachers and an administrator, and we will conduct health checks that include daily temperature checks. We may be asking questions about your child's general health and any potential exposure. There were many great questions regarding medical and health issues and protocols. We are working with our medical group to solve each of these as we make our plans, and we will share that information with you when we have it. Teachers will wear masks. We're hoping to get the clear masks so that children can read the teacher's facial expressions. We know that so much of that is a part of their learning. It's currently advised that children three and up wear masks. A child must be able to freely remove their mask when needed. So if they don't have the ability to remove their own mask, they should not wear one. A large part of our time at the beginning of the year will be spent teaching the children about hand washing and cleaning. And they will wash when they come in, in the morning, before they eat, before they begin play, after they go to the bathroom, after they come inside from anywhere else. Classrooms will be sanitized at the end of each day, and during the day, the teachers will clean, wiping down handles and switches as each child comes out of the bathroom or uses the sink. We will also teach your children to do that, so your homes should be sparkling. Yards will have sanitizing schedules and usage schedules so that they can be cleaned in between use. And as of now, classes will not mix outside. We are so lucky to have the extraordinary and varied outdoor space that we do. The teachers and I are confidently planning the outdoor classrooms we will make a part of our days. The idea of three-year-old social distancing is kind of mind-boggling. We, as the teachers, will set up environments that encourage distancing and singular work within a shared space as necessary. And we will have supplies for each child, as well as toys that are easily washed throughout the day to allow children to make use of them and to learn about taking turns. We plan to continue to use our specialists. Some may teach a class from a distance outdoors, and others may teach over Zoom while the class experiences the activity together from the classroom. Slide five. Our social and emotional approach. We know how important school is for your child's social and emotional growth. We know that there are some of you who are ready to bring your child back tomorrow and that there are others who will not bring your child until there is a vaccine. And we know there is every situation in between. We will meet you all where you are, and we will take our cues from the children. We will keep in mind their comfort as we plan our morning drop-off and separation process. We will hold them when they cry and help them navigate through their own emotions and potential anxieties. Given the number of constraints and the time we've been away, where possible, we are strongly considering keeping the children with a teacher or teachers from this past year until they get acclimated. And as we build these plans, we will share them with you. We are going to start the year with what we know, and we will adjust thoughtfully and with respect to the child as we are ready and as directives change. We are going to think flexibly and what that might look like for you in starting the school year with us. Slide six. While there are a lot of things we must do or things we cannot do, I want you to know that the quality of our program and our philosophical approach, while shifting to make room for these adjustments, will not be lost. We will continue with our emergent curriculum in play. We will continue to keep Judaism at the heart and the soul of our program. And we will continue to honor the growth of the child and the development of critical thinking skills, building relationships and a value system as our foundation for lifelong learning and success. At the end of the day, the guidelines as they presently exist make everything really clear. And for me, it makes it seem very doable. And the excellence of our staff and our resources make me feel incredibly confident about not only opening up in August, but also continuing to run a stellar program even when those guidelines evolve. I'm now going to turn it over to Tammy Weiser, who is going to walk you through some of the financial considerations and plans as it relates to the 2020-2021 school year. Tammy, you're muted.
I got it. Thank you, Jen, and thank you, everyone, for being here. It's great to see so many of our parents. I'm honored to see so many of our teachers and staff with us tonight. And thank you to Janine, and I see Lori from our board here. I appreciate your support in being here tonight. Jen just said she's confident, and I want to echo her confidence. We will get through this storm together. We will. And I want to talk to you a little bit about the financial situation and the impact of what we're looking at, both for now and for the future. I'm working very closely with our financial oversight committee and our Board of Directors as we look at our budget for 2020-21. It's important that you know that Wise School EC has a budget of approximately $3.8 million. As we look at coming back post-COVID-19, we know that expenses in running our school will indeed continue to go up. The things that Jen mentioned, the sanitizing, the maintenance, the ratio, make it more expensive to run our school, and we are prepared to do that with you. I want you to know that right now, Wise School and Wise Temple is financially stable and solid. We have a cash reserve, and we are carefully planning as we look at increased expenses and possibly reduced revenues for next year. While we don't have a full endowment yet, it is my hope that one day, God willing, we will continue to build our endowment and be able to continue to support all of the initiatives we have at Wise. So what does it look like for you for next year? Of the many, many questions we received on ShulCloud as well as through the emails, we know that the biggest question you are asking is, what happens if we don't return in person? What happens if we have distance learning? And when can we make that decision? So in conjunction with our Board of Directors, we've made the following decisions for every single family. First of all, we do need to have our enrollment on Monday, June 1st. That allows us to be able to plan carefully those pods of 10. As Jen shared, we need to put your students into pods of 10, hire our teachers, and assign them to a pod. What we are doing differently is we are going to give you a risk-free summer with a safety valve of August 1st. This is for EC enrollment, not ES. And what that means is you have until August 1st to watch this summer to evaluate, and we, as a school, have until August 1st as well. If on August 1st, you decide not to continue or if for some reason we're not ready to reopen in August, we will give you all of the money you have paid back, including your tuition deposit. Again, this is for the EC only. So you have all of June, all of July, to feel comfortable that you're making a decision without any risk. Now, once we start in August, we've got our classes going and we begin school August 31st. God willing, we are open for the entire 10 months. But should a situation come up where we did have to close? COVID changed, the county made a decision that everyone needed to stay at home. If that happens, we will not offer distance learning, but at that point, we would temporarily close our EC and give you a tuition refund prorated per day of instruction. We will give that refund at 75% of what your tuition was to cover your costs. And so we would look at whatever that date was. So in a hypothetical situation, it's December, we had to close, you would have a refund of 75% of your tuition. In a letter I had sent previously, we said that we were going to be buying an exterior tuition insurance for you. Instead, we will be providing this insurance so that you get the 75% tuition refund. But if we have the opportunity to reopen in the year, you would be able, if you chose, to re-enroll. So back with my hypothetical. If we closed in December and then we came back again in April, you could come back and re-enroll for the final eight weeks of school. So I want to just summarize what we are offering at this point. We do need everyone to enroll on June 1st. That allows us to create our pods and hire our teachers. But you have until August 1st to change your mind and go back and get everything you've paid, both deposit and tuition. Once we start the year and we are in person, we're good to go. If we close, we will not be doing distance learning. For the time we are closed, we will give you a tuition refund prorated for the days of instruction. I want to, again, applaud you for all of the questions you're asking and to repeat something that Jen said. This continues to evolve, and as it evolves and we get more information, it is our promise to you to share that. The part that we are continuing is our temple. We are always part of a temple. We're part of our clergy and part of your lives. And at this point, I'd like to hand it over to our senior rabbi, Rabbi Yoshi's way back, to share a little bit about our temple involvement and answer some of the questions you asked regarding the temple plans. Rabbi Yoshi, it's all yours.
Thanks, Tammy and Jen, and thanks, Janine, and thank you all for being with us. I was interviewed the other day by a reporter about the closures to synagogues and churches and mosques and reopening. And one of the things I said to her was that we never closed as a temple. It's true that there have not been in-person services at the temple since the middle of March, but the essential services that we provide as a synagogue have continued every day from that moment until today, including not just our Friday night services, our Shabbat morning Torah study, our Shabbat morning service, all of the programs that we've been providing for families with young children. In addition to that, we've had all of the lifecycle support that we would ordinarily provide. Some of that we've done virtually. So I've worked with families who had ill children and did Amish Shabbat through FaceTime. We've done the final confession that traditionally one does right before one dies. We've done that, you know, by phone, by FaceTime. We've done virtual Shiva Mignonim. We've done funerals in person. We've done baby namings, both in person and on Zoom. So all of the things that a synagogue does in terms of worship, in terms of learning, and in terms of lifecycle support, we've continued. And so I emphasized that to this reporter. And I said, the essential services that we provide, we can provide virtually and we can provide them in person. Obviously, in person is our preference, but if we're required to, for the safety of our congregants and our staff, to do it from afar, then we're prepared to do that. I want to address a specific question that we've gotten about Aaron Milken Center. And it's a project that we're deeply, deeply committed to. But one of the questions that people have asked relates to our planned construction. Our original plan was to begin construction on Aaron Milken Center in January of 2021. We've made a decision to push that start date back in part because we know that we're going to need all of the available square footage. As Jen referenced earlier, in terms of licensing, really want to make sure that we're not giving up any classroom space. And we had a full plan for how we were going to manage that, but it will make things easier for us during this challenging time responding to this pandemic, not to have construction happening simultaneously. So that will be pushed back, and as soon as it's advisable and safe, then we will break ground on that new project. What that means, though, in terms of the programmatic match that we received from the Lowell Milken Family Foundation, is no interruption in those funds. So as you might know, if you've been following the materials that we've sent out about our new early childhood center, in addition to a very generous grant to build a new facility, there's also a grant to help us to support our program. And some of those funds have already been used for staff development, for the hiring of additional teachers, for certain curricular materials. And that is a grant of $250,000 a year, which is a matching grant. And members of our community have helped to add to that to bring it to a $500,000 infusion of funds to our program. And on a $3.5 million budget, that's material. And it's something that you should be excited about as parents. I know it's something that our students benefit from, and I know it's something that our teachers benefit from. And that's going to continue throughout the grant period. It's an eight-year grant, so that will continue for the next seven years and maybe beyond. We'll see. But that's an update on Aaron Milken Center and construction. I want to remind you that the families that have generously made pledges for our new early childhood center and many of the families who supported the matching grant are families who do not currently have children in our program. Many of them are alumni families. And what this is a reminder of is the great benefit that parents in our early childhood program get to enjoy because they're part of a program that's connected to a temple. And in fact, the virtual background that I'm sitting in, and I'm obviously not in the gym right now, and it's not daytime. But this virtual background is an example of that. The families who helped to create Kat's Family Pavilion are families who do not have children in our early childhood program or our elementary school. And all of the beautiful Commons and Shalom Garden and all of those spaces that our early childhood kids and families get to enjoy and will get to enjoy soon enough when we're back on our campus, those are facilities that were funded by temple families, many of them alumni families, whose kids, as Tammy and Jen and Janine mentioned earlier, whose kids went to our program when, you know, they were toddlers. But their commitment to the temple and to our schools is a lifelong commitment. And so I just want to remind you of that relationship. We are deeply committed to delivering a world-class Jewish early childhood education, a day-school education, a religious school education, lifelong learning that is really without parallel. And no matter what happens going forward in terms of COVID-19 or other challenges that might come our way, we're going to continue to be open every day, whether on campus or in the virtual ways that we have been over these last several months. If you have any additional questions for me, you can always email me at rabbiyoshi@wiseLA.org. And if there are any lifecycle needs that you have for our clergy, know that we're available to you literally 24/7. You can call the temple. We have an after-hours answering service. You can email any of us, and we will try to be there for you, hopefully for many good times for babies and as your kids get older for bar and bat mitzvah, and someday for their weddings, and someday as you become grandparents. Let's not get ahead of ourselves. But we want to be there for you for all of those moments. I'm going to turn it back to Tammy and Jen, who have some more of your questions that they're going to be answering.
Thank you, Rabbi Yoshi. So one question we got asked is, what is going to happen next year to Hebrew immersion? And the answer is, because we are coming back live and not doing this as distance learning, we will not have any changes to this signature program. If your student was going to be enrolled in Hebrew immersion, they will still be enrolled in Hebrew immersion. Those two classes will be going on as anticipated. So not to worry, there's not a change in that. Jen, next.
Another question. Yep, I got it. Another question was about our transition program, what I like to call our first steps program. How are we going to get our youngest students or our new students acclimated? So as we always do, we're going to go slow. We are looking at, and I've said this a couple of times tonight, how blessed we are to have so much outdoor space at Wise. This actually helps us in the transition program because it allows for our parents to be outside of the classroom on a yard with their child and maybe another child and their parent or two, depending on the space, and then to have the doors to the classroom open. And the teacher will guide the child from the yard out to back into the classroom.
And the teacher will guide the child from the yard out to back into the classroom, back out again. There will be a lot of indoor-outdoor flow as the child gets used to the teacher and begins to transfer their trust over to the teacher. We expect that this is going to take longer than it typically does for the separation process. But we obviously want to go into this, keeping in mind the needs of the child and also your needs. We want you to feel good, and we want you to feel that you trust the program that you've enrolled your child in. So we're going to take our time, and we may have you come in for private visits before the start of school. And we're going to work together in partnership to make sure that your child is feeling good about being in school. Another question was, have you considered doing a January start option for each grade? So we are not, at this time, considering doing a January start option for each grade. But we are thinking flexibly about the possibility of starting classes as numbers pick up throughout the school year. As I said before, we know that some of you are ready to send your children tomorrow, and others won't be quite ready for some months, and that's okay. As we have enough children to start a class, we will do so as long as we continue to have the space.
And speaking of thinking flexibly, the last question that we got asked is, what is happening with our parenting center? And the answer is, we're thinking flexibly. We are looking at, do we do parenting center on campus? Do we do parenting center in people's homes? We know that young, young families are looking for ways to connect.
Tammy, we lost your video for a second. You froze up. We missed the last 20 seconds or so.
I froze. That's weird.
You're back now.
I don't know what happened. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Tam.
Excellent. My connection is unstable. Okay. We're looking at lots of different options for our parenting center and continuing parenting beyond our babies. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Jen to talk about how we will stay connected during the summer and continue to give you information. Jen?
So it's important to us that Wise continues to be a connection for all of us and that we continue to build community, even if we don't have camp, even if we are not running a program in person during the summer. So our clergy, our song leaders, specifically Dietzer, is so excited to continue to offer some Tach Shabbat programming through the summer, an opportunity that we can come together on Friday or on Saturday morning to celebrate Shabbat together. We are looking at different ways of offering support groups for all of you. We piloted one of those groups over the last several weeks with Nicole Mivorek and Rabbi Sari Laffer. And we're excited to kind of continue with that momentum and continue to provide resources for all of you. And we're also looking into doing some song sessions with your children, some storytime sessions with your children. And I do want to say, I have received so much wonderful feedback from my daily newsletters that typically include 10 to 12 activities, sometimes a little less, sometimes a little more. All of those activities are being compiled and will be on our website for you to access. So there will be thousands of activities for you to do with your child over the course of the summer. And as you know, for a young child, repetition is really important. So don't worry about repeating them, too. I want to thank you all.
What? Go ahead, Jen. Go ahead.
I want to thank you all for being with us tonight. We miss you so much, and there's nothing like being able to sign in here and to see all of your faces and to feel that sense of community. And I know that we are going to move this forward together as we uncover each piece of this puzzle. And I am really excited and honored to be doing that work with all of you. I now want to turn it back to Rabbi Yoshi's Y back, unless Tammy, you're looking like you want to say something.
I did want to say one last quick thing, which is, one last commitment we have to you is that we will continue to communicate. I know that you've been reaching out to us, and I want you to know that, in addition to a sense of confidence and community, we want you to know that you will get communications with us in June throughout the summer so that you're informed as we get more information as well. And I wanted to personally take a second and acknowledge Jen Shankman and how hard Jen has been working on all of this and how her leadership has guided us through some really challenging times. And we wouldn't be able to do any of what we're doing without Jen's daily, daily commitment and leadership. So Jen, thank you from the bottom of my heart. On behalf of all of these teachers and all of these families, thank you. And now we'll turn it over to Rabbi Yoshi for a closing benediction before we wrap it up for the night. Rabbi Yoshi, it's all yours.
Thank you, Tammy. I echo your sentiments. We are very, very fortunate to have such an incredibly gifted leader in Jen Shankman, gifted when it comes to pedagogy and when it comes to approaches to early childhood education. She is truly extraordinary, and as a human being, she is equally extraordinary. So thank you for your leadership. Jen, I know the teachers and staff really appreciate it. I know the parents appreciate it, and I know our children do as well. We're right up to Shavuot, one of the three major holidays mentioned in the Torah, the three pilgrimage festivals. We have in the fall Sukkot and then Passover in the spring. And then at the end of the barley harvest, seven weeks after Passover, we have Shavuot. We're celebrating that in a variety of different ways. In the congregation, Thursday night, we have a special Zoom gathering with a church in Compton that we've been doing programming with called Greater Zion Baptist Church. We have a wonderful festival, Shavuot service, that is led by many of our Beni Mitzvah students. So you can have a chance to see what graduates of our early childhood program look like eight, nine years later, and it's going to be really inspiring. And our Friday night service, our confirmation students, our 12th graders, again, many of whom are graduates of our early childhood program, are going to be helping to lead the service. So if you tune in on Friday night, you get to see what some of those kids in our program right now will look like in maybe 15 years. So it's pretty amazing. I just want to close with the blessing of healing. May we all be safe in body, and may we also be safe in spirit. And may we have the courage and the hope and the strength to know that challenging moments like these are moments that the Jewish people knows very well how to navigate. We've been through difficult times in the past, and we find ways to adapt, and we find ways to get to the other side. And the secret of that success in approaching each of these challenging moments is that we do it as a community. We stay together as a community, guided by our tradition, guided by millennia of wisdom. We are here together. May you and may we all go Michael Elchail from strength to strength. And I wish you an early Chag Samech for Shavuot, and I look forward to seeing you in the days, weeks, months, and years to come. Thanks, everybody.